Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City of Casa Grande City Council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order, and the first order of business tonight is our invocation, so invocation and pledge of allegiance. So, tonight, we have Captain Edgar from the Salvation Army here to give our invocation. Then, please remain standing, and we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Captain?
Greetings to all. Could we bow, should we pray? Dear Lord, we thank you for the many blessings. We pray for this assembled council, Lord. Let us not be misguided in this meeting so that we do not lead to decisions that produce ineffective results. Give us wisdom to govern the conflicting interests and issues of our time. Give us a sense of the welfare and the true needs of our people. Give us a thirst for justice. Give us confidence in what is good and feeding. Give us stability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreements. Give us personal peace in our lives, enjoying our daily tasks, so that in return, we can glorify you. We pray for the agenda set before us. Please give us assurance of what will please you and what will benefit those who live and working around our beloved city of Casa Grande. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Captain. Thank you to Salvation Army for tonight's invocation. Gloria, please let the roll call show that all members of council are present, except Ms. Fitzgibbons, and if anyone would like to offer her an excuse.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Please note her absence excused.
So noted.
Next item is our minutes.
Minutes. We have, basically, I move approval of the City Council regular meeting minutes from October 18th as they're presented, and we accept for the record the Casa Grande Police Personnel Retirement Board minutes from August 19th. The Healthcare Benefit Board of Trustees minutes from September 11th, or 17th, I'm sorry. Consider accepting the Healthcare Benefit Board of Trustees minutes October 22nd. Consider accepting the Casa Grande Youth Commission minutes from September 18th. Accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes from September 2nd. Accept the Police Advisory Board minutes from January 9th, and consider accepting the Police Advisory Board minutes from July 8th. And I move approval as read.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. All the minutes are approved. Claims against the city?
Mayor McFarland, I move to accept and pay the claims dated October 13th through 26, to the 26, 2021, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, claims are approved. Meeting agenda approval. Larry, any changes from staff?
We have none, Mr. Mayor.
Any changes from council? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, meeting agenda is approved as presented. We do have a special presentation tonight. We have a swearing-in of Officer Chelsea Ruiz.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we're going to request that this item be tabled to the next meeting.
Okay. Do I need a motion to do so?
Or continue, if we just say...
Either way, but you can just make a motion to table it to the next meeting, and that would be the cleanest thing to do.
Okay.
Someone would do that. Move to table until the next meeting.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second to table item number F1 to the next meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll table that. Next is our consent agenda items. All items listed with asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anyone from council who wants to remove any of our consent agenda items? Anybody from the public? All right, seeing none, then I'll entertain a motion to...
Mayor, I move that we accept the G1 through G...
10.
10, as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item on our agenda is public comments, so this is where the public is invited to speak to the council, reminding that anyone who gets up to speak that it is not an agendized item, so that we can't reply to you, but we can ask staff to follow-up on the item. So, and I will also ask you to state your name and your address, and then also to try and keep your comments to three minutes, and we will time it. So, I do have a speaker card here for Ellie and, is it Mila?
Mila.
If you guys want to come up, you can go first. Just state your names and your addresses, please.
Good evening, I'm Mila Lopez.
And I'm Al Wiles. And we are first-year members of the Casa Grande Youth Commission. We are both in ninth grade and go to the Casa Grande Union High School. Elle and I recently co-chaired our annual Day of Shredding event. We raised $1,855, which will go towards different events this year. We also want to say a quick thank you to all those who came out. Our next event we'll be working on are painting the Garden of Sunshine and honoring those who have passed away and building our float for the Electric Light Parade. We will also be holding a youth leadership conference, and we are kindly asking for any donations or sponsorships, and we have invited all youth commissions of Arizona, and we will be hosting it at the Rec Center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
And I have your addresses up here, so I'll give them to the clerk.
I told him not to.
Okay. All right, next agenda, oh, it's, the floor's still open, I'm sorry. So, if there's anybody else who would like to speak, you may approach the podium. All right, seeing none, then I will close the public comments, and we'll move on to our Ward of Contracts, and we'll start with I-1. Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council authorize a contract with Sunland Asphalt out of Phoenix, Arizona, through a One Government Procurement Alliance contract number 17-16P-05, to apply two applications of poly-modified master seal to roadways within the city of Casa Grande as part of our annual pavement preservation program in an amount not to exceed $1,213,458. Using this contract does provide us the best pricing to have this material applied, and this is a contract that we have used in the past to perform these maintenance products on our streets. This is part of our maintenance program. We currently budget $2.2 million for our pavement preservation, and $200,000 of that is for striping, and the rest is for pavement maintenance. And then, the next contract that you'll consider will be looking at the remainder of that budget. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Kevin, I just have one question, just out of curiosity, whether you know the answer or not, but how many miles or how many streets will that help us resurface?
And I forgot my fact sheet, so I don't know how many square yards that does, but we did have a map that's attached.
Oh, okay.
That shows all of the streets that are being done as part of this pavement preservation.
All the developments that they're...
I'll look at my map. Thank you.
I apologize for not having that.
That's okay. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? Okay. It's quite a number.
Roughly, 350,000 square yards.
There you go. Thank you, Matt. All right, it's a good program, and I think our streets actually are in pretty good shape because of it, so thank you, Kevin. Thanks to your crew as well. If there's no other comments, then I'll call for an ordinance number... Did you have a comment?
I just was going to read it off real quickly for the ones in the audience. Vilago Arroyo Vista, McCartney Center, Los Portales, Monterey Village, and Mission Royale are the ones that all have...
Streets covered.
Yeah, the streets to be done.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Powell.
You bet.
All right, seeing no other comments, then can I get an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number 3310, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a bid from Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC for the annual pavement preservation program, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Sunland Asphalt and Construction LLC in accordance with the terms and conditions submitted to One Governmental Procurement Alliance.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 3310 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is item I-2, and I'm assuming this is the other half?
Yes, this is a request for a contract with Cactus Asphalt to perform the crack sealing of the streets that were just identified as part of the Seal Coat Pavement Maintenance Program, and we're asking for a spending authority of $467,826. And we're going to be asking to contract this using the Pinell County Job Order Contract number 175923. Cactus Asphalt is a company that we've used for numerous years for our pavement preservation, specifically for crack sealing and some chip sealing as well, but they've done our crack sealing for the last two years and have done a great job for us. Again, this is part of our pavement maintenance program. The crack sealing will be the first portion of the project, and then that'll be followed up by the fog seal that we'll be placing on there. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? All right, seeing none, then I'll call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria?
Ordinance number 3311, an ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from Cactus Asphalt, a division of Cactus Transport, Inc., for the annual pavement preservation program, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to Cactus Asphalt, a division of Cactus Transport, Inc., in accordance with the terms and conditions submitted to Pinell County.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve ordinance 3311 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, next item is item I-3.
Thank you. Staff has recommended that the mayor and city council authorize a contract with SmithCo Enterprises in an amount not to exceed $200,000 for processing of approximately 22,850 tons of stockpiled concrete located at our city landfill. This project is very important to hopefully reclaim this concrete that we've been collecting down there. A majority of this concrete actually comes from the Main Street and Florence Street projects south of the tracks that we completed, good, clean concrete, and this contractor will be processing that to a specification that is pretty close to road base, so we'll be able to use this for our roadway construction, which happens, excuse me, constantly at the landfill as we move through that site with our filling operation, and also other departments will be able to take advantage of that. The revenues that were originally generated from taking in this contract when it wasn't one of our city projects totaled about $600,000. So, this is a profitable operation for us and hopefully be able to recycle all of this material instead of just landfilling it. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from council? All right, seeing none, then I'll call for a resolution number, please.
Resolution number 5354, a resolution of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting a proposal from SmithCo Enterprises, Inc., for the landfill reclaimed concrete project, authorizing expenditure of public funds and authorizing execution of a contract with or purchase order to SmithCo Enterprise, Inc.
Mayor McFarland, I move for approval of resolution number 5354 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right. Next item is item J, which is our boards and commissions. These are filled with volunteers from our community that help the city in terms of giving us feedback in various areas of the city, and very much appreciate their volunteerism and stepping up for the city of Casa Grande and their fellow citizens. So, the first item is item J-1. We're taking each one of these separate, as they're separate, boards and commissions. So, the first item is to appoint, and we, they, these people go through a process that currently involves Mr. Lavender and Ms. McBride and myself, and we interview each individual, and then put that individual forward to the whole council for approval, so that's where we're at today. So, first of all, is Joe Hankin to the Arch and Humanities Commission with the term to extend through September 30th, 2024. Joe's not here. Is Joe here tonight? I don't think so. Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion to approve her appointment.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next item is J-2. Consider approving the reappointment of Anthony Estrada to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term to expire on November 7th. Anthony is qualified to or able to serve another term, so again, we did interview everybody and talked to them again, and this is a reappointment for Andy. I know Andy's not here, because I don't see him out there, but I'll move for approval.
I move approval of Anthony "Andy" Estrada for Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you, Andy, for your service. J-3, consider approving the reappointment of Rob Anderson to the appointment of Stephen Hay, oops, and Stephen Hayes, excuse me. So, the appointment of, reappointment of Rob Anderson and the appointment of Stephen Hayes to the Board of Adjustment with terms to extend through November 17th of 2025. Is either Rob or Stephen here tonight? Okay, just wanted, the only reason I'm asking is I wanted to make sure we recognized them if they were here. I'll entertain a motion to approve these two appointments.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Next is item J-4. Consider accepting the resignation of Tremaine Rosaw from the Historic Preservation Commission, and consider the appointments of Dana Lewis with the terms to expire August 1st of 2023, and Dana Zados with the term to expire on August 1st of 2024 to the Historic Preservation Commission, and also approving waivers of the residency requirement. And that's for Dana Zados, correct, Gloria? It's not for the...
It's both of them.
Oh, both of them?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. All right, are either of them here?
Y'all back in the back.
Stand up.
I bet you're Dana.
That's a good guess. This is Dana Zados. Thank you, Dana, for your volunteer, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Great pleasure.
Exodus. I'm sorry. I should have asked. My bad. I thought it was like Xanadu, no? Exodus, okay. All right, thank you, Dana. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you to all of our boards and commission volunteers for their volunteering. It is a highly paid job, and so, actually, they don't get paid anything, so I just want to make sure that's clear, but we do appreciate their participation in helping the city out. Thank you. Thank you, Dana. All right, next item is item L, and L-1, which is, these are public hearings, and consider the approval of ordinance number 1178.194.5.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So, this is a request for a PAD amendment known as Hancock Cottonwood. It's an amendment to the, a portion of the G Diamond Ranch Planned Area Development Zone District. I think it's asleep. So, the amendment request involves approximately 31 acres of the G Diamond Ranch PAD. The area of amendment is in the southeastern quadrant of the G Diamond Ranch PAD, otherwise located at the northwest corner of Pirat Road and Cottonwood Lane. What the amendment would do is it would remove the commercially designated and the traditional multifamily designated land uses that you see on the map there to the right, and it would replace with a single and two-family rental community at a density of about 11 dwelling units per acre. The developers proposing 331 units, 104 rental units that are one-bedroom, and 227 rental units that are two-bedroom. They're all single-story, and it would be a gated community with enclosed private backyards, and it functions like an apartment complex, except that the rental units are not in multifamily This screen shows you a little bit more of an overview of what's surrounding this property within the G Diamond Ranch PAD. To the north of the site is an area that is currently designated for single-family residential. However, that area does not have certificates of assured water supply, so it likely will not develop for a single-family residential-type community. And then, on the other side of Colorado, you mind advancing, Steve? Thank you, and one more. On the other side of Colorado is the G Diamond Ranch area that does have certificates of assured water supply, and that's currently going through the final plat process. It was approved by council a few months ago, and the applicant is following up with some additional requirements that are needed to get that recorded. The applicant has submitted a major site plan, and what I'm showing on this screen is just an excerpt of that. It's actually, it has not gone to Planning Commission yet. It's scheduled for this Thursday for Planning Commission consideration, but as you can see, this gives you a little bit more layout of how the units would appear on the site, and they're providing a variety of different elevation types. Some are indeed duplexes with garages, and others are standalone units. This was actually the screen I was referring to with regard to the adjacent final plat that was just approved on the other side of Colorado Street. With that construction, Colorado Street will be mostly improved in between the development that we're considering this evening, associated with the PAD amendment and the final plat on the other side of Colorado. There will be the extension of Colorado from Cottonwood up to where it presently terminates just north of O'Neal. When reviewing PAD amendments, these are the criteria that have to be evaluated, and the staff report does get into these with more specifics. I just want to talk about the conformance to the city's general plan. This area is within the community corridor land use designation of the 2030 general plan. The community corridor does allow density of up to 25 dwelling units per acre. This is actually between 11 and 12 dwelling units per acre, so it's well under that maximum density that would otherwise be allowed. Also, one of the goals of the 2030 general plan is to minimize land use conflicts. One of the action steps related to that goal is to increase medium-density housing for use as a buffer between low-density and high-density developments. So, this is seen as a really good use, because you do have future single-family that's going to happen to the west of Colorado. This is going to be higher density, but it serves as a good buffer between that and the arterial roadways, which is Cottonwood and Pirat to the south and to the east. And as far as the next steps, as I mentioned, Planning Commission will be considering the major site plan request for this, subject to council's approval of this PAD amendment this evening, and then their next steps would be to submit for a site development permit and building permit, which would be administrative. Planning Commission heard the PAD amendment request a couple months back, and they did recommend that city council approve this amendment to the G Diamond Ranch PAD, subject to a condition regarding right-of-way dedication. And that concludes my part of the presentation.
Anybody have any questions?
Can you go back to the slide that showed kind of a map of the area? Couple more. I don't see a place where, where were they planning on having, and I realize this is, we're not doing the site plan, but I don't see the, an area where a school bus could necessarily turn around in there.
Sure. Well, I can, I can sort of address that, Councilmember Lavender. So, the site's actually going to have three points of access, one at Cottonwood, and then there's one at Pirat there that you can see to the right, and one at Colorado. The connection between Colorado and Pirat creates a really nice straight shot for a school bus if they wanted to utilize that area. I did send this out to the school district for comment. They haven't yet gotten back to me, but I think there is a potential to provide a bus pickup location on that drive aisle. The other benefit is that Colorado is a collector road, which in past... The other benefit is that Colorado is a collector road, which in past conversations with the school district, collector roads make an adequate stop if need be for buses.
Thank you.
Bob?
James, I see in the sample elevations that the duplexes have garages. Do the single buildings have garages too, or just covered parking or?
So, Councilmember Huddleston, they're not planning to have attached garages to single units. However, there are areas throughout the site that do provide for covered parking. And then there's also detached garages also provided on the site. So that might end up being assigned to a standalone unit, but just not attached to the unit itself.
Is there a rule of thumb that each unit gets two parking spaces, or has that been decided yet?
So the PAD guide does propose a certain parking amount. As a PAD, it's a customized zone district, so they get to propose their own required parking, if you will. In comparing that with what would ordinarily be required with a traditional apartment complex, they're actually far in excess, to the point that even if we didn't count any of the garage spaces as parking spaces, they're meeting what would ordinarily be allowed as a traditional apartment complex.
Okay. And, and just as a comment, I'm not expecting you to answer, answer this or respond to it, but just as an observation, it seems like more and more people are using their garages for storage, and, and then they have one or two vehicles that have to be parked elsewhere. So, you know, either not counting the garages as parking spaces or, like you said, over-providing, sounds good to me, so.
Matt?
I just want, another comment is great use of this piece of land right here because it's all single-story, so the other neighborhoods surrounding won't have any view shed issues, and the density is quite lower than it could be. And this is the type of product we've been looking for, for workforce housing, so I hope that they can, I think it's a great place, great design, and I hope that they can get going pretty soon to provide some more housing options.
Anybody else? All right. Thank you. All right, then, this is a public hearing. Since council has no comments, I'll open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to comment on this particular PAD amendment? Okay. Seeing no one, then I'll close the public hearing, and then I'll call for an ordinance number, please Gloria.
Ordinance number 1178.194.5. An ordinance of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, approving a major amendment to G Diamond Ranch Planned Area Development adopted for a property generally located at the northwest corner of Cottonwood Lane and Pierrot Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve 1178.194.5 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes.
All right, the next item on our agenda is L2. This is also a public hearing, and we'll consider approval of ordinance number 1178.203.1.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, well, this is being brought up on the screen. I'd just like to provide the council with a little bit of background that'll help put both L2 and L3 in a little bit of context, because they are a new type of zone change that you haven't seen before, and I just wanted to let you have some, some background. The, what you're going to be seeing on both L2 and L3 is a request to rezone properties from their current PAD developed zone district into R2. So what's driving the need or the desire for these zone changes is a newly passed law that actually just took effect on September 30th that mandates the Arizona Department of Water Resources to allocate additional cause to developments that have cause already, that have vacant lots, if the developer or the property owner can prove that the additional cause does not use any more acre-feet of water than their current approved cause. So when certificates of assured water supply are issued for subdivisions, they're issued, you get a certain number of lots, but more importantly, you get a specific acre-feet of water. And so, since these subdivisions that we're, that we're going to be talking about this evening were primarily approved back in like 2006 or so, 15 years. And over the last 15 years, with improvements in plumbing, which have become more water-efficient, and changes in landscaping that's more low-water landscaping, the usage of water for each, each individual home has actually decreased significantly over the last 15 years. So land developers are aware of this new law and they desire to try to increase the number of lots in their developments that actually have certificates of assured water supply. Now, they can't, they can't increase those lots under their existing PAD zoning. And the reason they can't is because the existing PAD zoning, although it allows lots as small as 6,000, it requires any lot that's less than 7,000 be offset by lots that are 8,000 square feet or larger, resulting in essentially a 7,000-square-foot lot average. So, under the R2 zone, you can actually create lots as small as 5,000 square feet. You can create lots that are a little narrower, a little less lot width, and have a little, have side yard setbacks of, for example, a five and five versus five and 10. As, as staff was reviewing these requests, we, we really thought about what the, the impact on the community of, of this kind of zone change. And obviously, creating more lots that have cause is critical to the future growth of the community. That's one of our limiting factors in growth today, is how many vacant lots we have with cause. Allowing some smaller lots also potentially will allow for the creation of more affordable homes on those smaller lots. So with that, with those two very positive impacts, staff was inclined to support these zone changes and recommend approval to both Planning Commission and City Council. However, we really wanted to make sure that, although we're changing the zoning from PAD to R2, that these new R2 subdivisions maintain the quality of design that we have in our PADs today. Because PADs do have higher level of design than what we call our straight residential zone districts of R1, R1A, and R2. So, to do so, as a condition of record, staff is recommending that these R2 zone districts comply with the PAD open space requirements, the PAD perimeter wall requirements, the PAD landscaping requirements, and the housing product review as well, to make sure that they are really still quality subdivisions, just with smaller, smaller lots than would be allowed with the PAD. The other thing that modification that we made to the R2 is the R2 zone district is an interesting zone district in that it's, allows both medium-density multifamily, like duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, some townhomes, as well as single-family and duplex, duplex development. These, these proposals are really to just create single-family neighborhoods. So there's a condition of record also that says that there's no multifamily development allowed. So they're essentially going to be single-family subdivisions. And the last thing that we're doing is, although these, these land developers have these zone dis, these zone changes before, before you now, and actually preliminary plats probably in the queue that we're reviewing, they have not yet completed, to my knowledge, their ADWR approval process. So we will be requiring that they complete their ADWR approval process, and that we confirm that the additional cause that are allocated by ADWR matches what's, how many lots they're proposing in their final plat. So at the end of the day, we'll make sure that there's a, an equivalent number of cause for any lot that's being created. So I just wanted to give you kind of an overview of what's driving this, and then both Jaclyn and James will cover the specific request for L2 and L3 for you.
Thank you, Paul.
Right. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The next item on the agenda is for a zone change from a portion of the Carlton Commons Plan Area Development to R2. This request is by EPS Group on behalf of D.L. Willis to change the zoning on approximately 235 acres. The, the existing PAD has, allows for 793 single-family lots with a density of 3.36 dwelling units per acre. The proposed R2 is for 1,015 single-family lots with a proposed density of 4.3 dwelling units per acre. And again, as Paul mentioned, this is an increase of 222 lots as a result of state legislation allowing, there's a Department of Water Resources, additional certificates of assured water. I did want to mention that there is an existing portion of the Carlton Commons Plan Area Development that is not part of this request. This is to the west of the proposed zone change, and the remaining PAD was, has a final plat that was completed in the mid-2000s for 595 lots. This density for this area is 3.8 dwelling units per acre and continues to meet the existing PAD requirements. So looking at the current existing PAD requirements and the proposed change to R2, as Paul mentioned, the average lot size is 7,000 square feet. Minimum lot widths are 55, with minimum side setbacks of 10 and 5, and with a balance of lots that are less than 8,000, there must be additional lots over 8,000 square feet. So the proposed R2 allows for a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 45, with minimum side setbacks of 5 feet and 5 feet. The preliminary plat that's currently under review has lot sizes ranging from 5,175 square feet to 6,325 square feet. And while this is a request, it's increasing lots, staff wants to ensure that the resulting development has the same design elements and quality of a PAD. And for this reason, staff is recommending conditions of records relating to design requirements. So looking at the zone change criteria, staff evaluates the general plan, and this is part of the neighborhood's land use category. This land use category allows a maximum density of 4.5 dwelling units per acre, and the proposed zone change is currently at 4.3, meeting this requirement. In addition, the R2 zoning district within the neighborhood's general plan is an appropriate zoning district. And we also look at the goals and action steps that are in the land use element, and goal N4 is to encourage a variety of neighborhood design and development, development patterns. And with this, it provides a variety of housing choices for all levels of income generations and household demographics, and would increase the amount of medium-density housing for the area. And with this, the Guiding Principles for the Land Use Plan Number 4 is to increase the range of housing choices and products available to members of the community. And we feel this zone change supports this. Next steps, once, if the zone change is approved by City Council, Planning Commission will hear the preliminary plat at an upcoming scheduled meeting. Again, as mentioned, the preliminary plat is still under review. Then council will consider the final plat, where the required certificates of, from ADWR will verify the number of water certificates that are issued. In addition, staff in the city will look at either requiring HOA or a special maintenance district with the reformation of the final plat. And with that, site development plans, final landscaping plans, public improvements, and financial, financial insurance will all be required prior to platting, recording. And again, as mentioned, housing products symbol will be considered administratively through this process. So zoning commission forward a favorable recommendation to City Council to approve DSA 2100106, zone change from Carlton Commons PAD to R2 with the following conditions of record. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Mayor, before you continue with the public hearing, I would also like to mention to the City Council that there's another new statute that requires cities to consider, when doing zoning ordinance amendments, to consider the impact that zoning ordinance change might have on the affordability of housing. And so although this is, that clearly applies to tax amendments, this is really a zone change, but with the changes to the conditions of record, one could argue it, it kind of is a, a new zoning district, if you will. So staff did consider the impact of, of our, our recommendation on the affordability of housing, and although these PAD design standards will certainly increase the development cost for the developer, that they, this zone change will also significantly increase the number of lots that can be created in the development. So in the end, we actually think that this zone change from PAD to R2 will result in more affordable housing. It will have a, a positive impact on the cost of housing, not a negative one, just so for your information.
Thank you, Paul. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Go ahead, Jeff.
Help me understand the, the change from a five, 10-foot setback to five. Am I understanding that these front doors could be five feet from the road? Am I?
No, that, sorry.
Side setbacks.
Councilmember Lavender, we have the side setbacks. The, the front setbacks are 20 feet, and the rear would be 20 as well.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
And it's five and five, right?
Yes.
So it's 10 feet between houses?
Yeah.
Okay.
So that five is, is on each yard.
Oh, I see that side.
And what's really driving the need to have a reduced setback is you can see the minimum lot width is going from 55 to 45, so these housing products are typically 35 feet wide, and so that's why they, you know, they can still meet the five and five within a 45-foot wide, wide lot.
I just slept through the word set, side.
Mr. Powell?
With the R2 zone allows single-family homes on individual lots no smaller than 5,000 square feet, so this is kind of a medium density. Is that basically what this amounts to?
The, the density on this, Councilman Powell, is 4.3 dwelling units per acre. From a planner perspective, we actually define medium density from, more like from five to 12, so that, that build-to-rent project is more like a medium density for us that we just saw. We would still say from, as planners, that this was low-density, but the public perception probably is that it's more medium-density. So, from a plant, technical planning standpoint, it's still low-density. The public will probably view it as a medium density. Does that answer your question?
As close as you can get, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Bob?
A comment that with water issues being what they are, and with housing prices being what they are, I think this is a very logical step for us to take. We're getting, we're getting more people into a smaller area of land and ultimately using less, less water or the same, yeah. So I, I think it's a good thing. My, my one criticism, and I'm, I don't, again, I don't think I'm looking for an answer, I just want to throw it out that I'm concerned about it. And I don't know if there's been any attention focused on this particular issue. But these neighborhoods that, that have the smaller lots, and now we're going from a width of 55 down to 45, parking on the street seems to be becoming more and more of an issue. It, it seems to be more and more common to try to drive down a street and have cars parked on both sides, where that pretty much limits one car at a time to go up and, up and down the street. I don't know if that's part of, of the consideration of these neighborhoods, but I, I see with that width getting smaller that that issue is going to become more and more... that width getting smaller that that issue is going to become more and more prevalent.
So, Mayor Protem Huddleston, actually, that, that's certainly a very good observation. And it's, it's interesting that the, the zoning code actually does differentiate with how many parking stalls you have to have on your lot for, if you have on-street parking or don't have. So, if you don't have on-street parking, the single-family home has to have three spaces, does count the garage. But if you have on-street parking, then you can only, only require to have two. We still think there's probably going to be on-street parking, but if you think about in a 45-foot wide lot, you have a 20-foot at least wide driveway, maybe 24. So, you, so you only really have maybe one parking space in front of each lot, maximum, right? The, the lot, the width of the pavement for our local streets does allow for parking on both sides, but it is tight for passing between, between cars.
Well, as I said, it's ju, it's just an observation. I mean, I, I'm, I'm going to vote yes on this, but I, I think it's a logical move. I'm just concerned about that.
Paul, isn't there also a chance that if, if there's an HOA, that the HOA can restrict on-street parking or is that possible?
I don't know. There's a new law on that. I'm not sure what the law says about parking and regulating, regulating parking on public streets.
Yeah, and we'll look, generally speaking, though, the HOAs do have the power to regulate certain parking on streets. They can't regulate parking related to certain work vehicles, for example. So, if you have like an APS lineman truck and, I'm not aware of them changing the statute further, but we'll certainly look at that. The city has the opportunity, when it wants to, to not allow on-street parking, but obviously we, we do that throughout the community. There are certain HOAs that do enforce it stringently as far as on-street parking.
And also, if I might add, from a planner perspective, we actually see that slowing of vehicles to let one pass is a positive thing to slow traffic in neighborhoods.
I can see that.
Any other comments or questions, Matt?
Little bit of what, what Bob said, but you know, with the new water requirements and everything, this is a great way to get more houses. Something that was in the presentation, I don't think, or in the proposal, is the fact of this is the same size of development perimeter-wise, but yet we're getting more homes, so we're getting more impact fees per home to serve the same amount of area. So, that's one thing. And also, you got to remember that these, the people developing, selling the land are business people and this is what the market is driving right now. So, that's what people are looking for is these, these type of homes. And it goes along with our affordable homes and everything else. They're trying to do everything they can. And also, I say this, when you put more people in an area like this, it allows for more rural lifestyle on the outside of towns and stuff, you know, because people want to live in this area. So, we're keeping that rural character around the area. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Matt. Any other comments from council?
I just have a clarification. The September meeting for planning and zoning said that there were no inquiries or comments. Has there been any to your office since that September meeting?
Councilmember McBride, I did receive, I just a question on what outcome of this was, but nothing other than that.
Mr. Powell, did you have one more comment?
Yeah, I've, I know some of the people are complaining about the R2 and wish we were doing R1. The, I know you've gone, you've gone down 2,000 square feet between I1 and, and, or R1 and R2. And, and I heard this from one of the ones that's a developer, that he wished they would get rid of a lot of this R2 stuff because it doesn't make the kind of community that you want to see nearly as well as it does if you do it on the 7,000-square-foot lots. So, that's just a comment I'm, I'm giving and, and I would, as I say, would much prefer that it was R1 instead of R2, but it is what it is.
All right. Not seeing any other comments from council, then I will open the floor up. This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing on item L2. So, if there's anyone here who would like to speak on this matter, please come forward, state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and I'll call for an ordinance. Sorry? You can speak or forever hold your peace. No, I'm just kidding.
My name's Hubert, 1549 East Prickly Pear Place, Casa Grande, Arizona. A question I have for the developers is, is has there been an impact since there's going to be one-third of more housing in this same area? That increases the number of vehicles that are going to be entering and exiting this development. The roads surrounding them, what type of impact is it going to have? Now, are, are roads surrounding these areas going to be able to handle it? We just went through an expansion on Pert Road between Cottonwood and McMurray, which has alleviated some of the issue, but we're talking about an additional 600 cars coming in and out of this same area. Thank you.
Paul?
So, as part of our process, as I mentioned, we're currently processing a preliminary plat for these additional lots. And as part of that, we do require a traffic impact analysis that looks at the trip generation and its impact on the perimeter streets and intersections as well. And if that, if the additional traffic degrades the level of service at those intersections, the developer is required to mitigate that, whether it's with additional traffic control, traffic signals, lanes, et cetera. So, we do take a look at that and we, and the preliminary plat, and we will not approve the preliminary plat if it has an adverse impact on the level of service specifically.
On a follow-up question is, is those additional developments for the secondary roads, are they going to be done prior to development of the HOAs or afterwards of the development of the HOAs?
If, if there's any, if there's any adverse impact and mitigation that needs to be done to address that adverse impact, has to be done concurrent with the development.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? All right, seeing no more public comments, then I will call for an ordinance number, please, Gloria.
Need to close the public hearing, if you'd like.
All right, first I'll close the public hearing and then call for an ordinance number, please.
Thank you.
Ordinance number? Ordinance number 1178.203.1. An ordinance of the council, the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to multifamily residential R2 on the property generally located at the southeast corner of, southwest corner section of Pier Road and Don Road.
Mayor McFarland, I would move for approval of ordinance number 1178.203.1 as presented.
Second.
Right of a motion and a second, Gloria. Can I please get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Lavender?
Yes.
Councilmember McBride?
Yes.
Councilmember Herman?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell?
No, thanks.
Mayor Protem Huddleston?
Yes.
Mayor McFarland?
Yes. All right, next item is item L3. And I believe this is a similar story, correct?
Yes. I'll try not to sound too repetitive. This is a zone change request for a portion of the Sonoran Heights Plan Area Development Zone 2R2. The Sonoran Heights Plan Area Development Zone is approximately 257 acres and it's entitled for multiple land uses, but primarily for single-family residential. The existing PAD accounts for 750 single-family home sites at a density of about 3.2 dwelling units per acre. The proposed R2 zone would increase that to about 995 single-family homes based on the preliminary plat that we have under review. And that would take the density to 4.33 dwelling units per acre. This increases, has been discussed, is as a result of the recently approved state legislation allowing for an increase in certificates of assured water supply. Now, there are some differences between a PAD and R2 as been, as has been previously talked about with the other zone change for Carlton Commons. Because of the increase in lots and the smaller lot sizes as an R2 zone, we wanted to ensure that the resulting development had some of the same design elements and quality as if it were to be a PAD. So, staff is recommending certain conditions of record that would help assure that. So, there are some recommended design requirements such as, as an R2 zone, they would still be subject to housing product as if it were a PAD. Also, the minimum 15% open space would have to still be adhered to, themed perimeter fencing and front yard landscaping detail. And like if it were a PAD, it would have to have an HOA or a special maintenance district determined by the city to ensure that the common areas were well-maintained. Also, within this zone district, a recommended condition of record is that multifamily development be prohibited. As Paul mentioned at the outset, these conditions of record could have some sort of effect ultimately on affordability, which speaks to another recently passed law at the state legislation, legislature level, that when considering zone changes, we have to, to take into consideration the impact on affordability. And though requiring this developer to have this site be subject to certain design requirements, we feel that, that there will probably be a benefit with regard to the affordability because this does allow for more homes. When considering zone changes, there are three primary criteria that they ha, that have to be addressed and it all sort of speaks to compliance with the general plan. So, the majority of this area does fall within the neighborhood's general plan land use, which does allow single-family developments with homes on individual lots, but with a maximum gross density of 4.5 dwelling units per acre. Currently, as the Sonoran Heights PAD, it's about 3.2 dwelling units. The proposed density would be 4.33, so under that 4.5 max. R2 zoning is included as an appropriate zone district within the neighborhood's general plan land use category. Within the land use element of the general plan, the following goal and action steps help support this zone change. So, the goal states, goal N4, that cities to encourage a variety in neighborhood design and development patterns. And then there's two action steps that speak to that. One is providing a variety of housing choice within the neighborhood's category for all income levels, generations and household demographics. And another one of the action steps is to increase the amount of medium-density housing. Although 4.33 dwelling units per acre is technically still considered low-density housing, this would obviously generate an increase in houses and would be an increase in the density, but that would be supported by that goal N4. Also, I want to speak to one of the applicable elements found in the general plan, which states an increase, we should increase the range of housing choices and products available to all members of the Casa Grande community. Regarding the next steps, if the zone change is approved by council, planning commission would hear a preliminary plat at an upcoming planning commission meeting. And then council would autumn, would at some point consider the final plat, which is required to have certification from Arizona Department of Water Resources verifying the number of water certificates issued to that area. And as previously discussed, we would require that either an HOA or a special maintenance district at the discretion of the city be required to be formed at the time of plant, final plat recordation. And then the developer would have to submit site development plans, final landscaping plans, public improvement permits and financial assurance to secure the site, all required prior to the final plat being recorded. And then the housing product submittal would be construed, would be considered administratively. Planning commission did hear this request and they did recommend that city council approve DSA 21 001 56, a zone change for a portion of the Sonoran Heights PAD to R2, subject to conditions that were referenced within this presentation and within the RCA. And that concludes my presentation.
Mr. Greglardi, would you mind going back to the first, the first map you had up So, the high-density residential that's up in the upper left-hand corner, that remains, that will remain as a PAD?
Mr. Mayor, correct.
Okay. Even though it's structurally different in terms of its current design, PAD design?
So, currently, that high-density residential that is within the, the current existing PAD is about 20.3 acres. And the remnant of the PAD is about 27.3 acres. So, it not only can, includes that PAD, within that PAD remnant.
So, it's a little bigger.
It includes the 20.3 multi-acre multifamily site and then a little bit left extra that was part of the single-family residential PAD. So, when that remnant gets proposed for development, they're likely going to have to modify the zoning.
And what, there's some additional developments going on up north to the, off of, or south of Florence there, next to the hotel and the Denny's and all that, right? Isn't that where the, the new Aldi's is supposed to be going?
Mr. Mayor, so, correct, that is a little further to the west, though. So, the western boundary of this PAD zone is Henness. The eastern boundary of, of recent development activity that's taken place to allow Aldi and a upcoming build-to-rent community, its eastern boundary is Villa del Cielo, which is west of Henness.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Lavender?
This, on the map on the left has a school site and it's not on the right. Is there any kind of a, an agreement with schools that, or is that just?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lavender, you're correct. What, what the amendment would do is it would remove the school site designation. However, it is still allowed under the R2 zone. I'm not sure what type of existing agreement had, was in place between the school district and the developer. However, they, they have removed that school designation.
Bob?
Access to Florence Boulevard, is that Cuchara's, up Cuchara's? But it, it doesn't include any improvements on Henness, at least from the development to Florence Boulevard?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Huddleston, correct. Essentially, when they, if this zone change were to be approved and they move on to the plating stage, they will have to demonstrate how the site will get adequate access. So, at the time of its development, for certain, there would be the extension of Cuchara's Court to Florence because the property boundary of- Henness Road will ultimately go to Florence Boulevard, however, as you see on the map, the development does not reach all the way to Florence on that side. So Henness will be extended with future development. Fortunately, we've had a number of recent proposals that will likely come to fruition that will enable Henness adjacent to that undeveloped area to be improved. And then you also have Early Road on the south, which will see its half-street improvements like you would with Henness and Cuchara's abutting this site. Early Road is a minor arterial, and that does continue to the east and west.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just give a little bit more background information, you know, as staff evaluates these proposals to go from PAD to R2, we do take a look at how this development would fit or not fit with the development that surrounds it, a compatibility review. And so we're really sensitive to what kind of developments are around it and what, to ensure that there really would not be any adverse impact on the surrounding properties by this new development. So that's one thing I want to make you aware of. The other thing is, although the R2 allows the applicant to create lots as small as 5,000 square feet, staff directs our developer applicants that we really want to see a mix of lot sizes in each of these. So for example, in that Carlton Commons project that we just heard earlier, the lot mix, the range was from 5,175 to 6,300. So, and all of them have ranges of lot sizes like that. So they're not all, I want to make sure you know that they're not all just cookie-cutter 5,000-square-foot lots. There's a range of lot sizes and lot widths, we're just telling you what the minimum could be on these projects. And you'll see that, when you see the final plat, which has to come before you, you'll see the specific final lot sizes and variations.
Thank you, Paul. All right, no more comments from council then. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the floor for public comment on this item L3. Is there anyone who would like to speak to council? All right, seeing nobody jump up, then I will close the public hearing. And Paul, I did have one comment, as we move through and we do these developments and whatnot, I know we have a trail system and all, you know, for the city, and I hope we're looking at that trail system and how these communities can connect to that trail system.
Absolutely.
Because I noticed there's, it looks like there's more trail system in the original PAD than there is in the current one. Now, there could be just artist rendition, that sort of thing, in there, but I just want to make sure that we're, we are thinking about that as we move through these approval processes and plat designs and all that stuff.
We do look at that, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Matt? I noticed, because I was looking at this, the first one compared to the one we're considering now, and the first one looks like it has a lot more open space, but I know it's the same percentage requirement, but it looks like in the newer one, they've taken out a lot of the green in the drawing when I zoomed in on it. So there's a lot of open space that's probably more drought-tolerant type stuff to, going with our new goals and perceptions of everything. It doesn't look as much open space until you actually zoom in and see all the, you know, less grass.
Landscaping?
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Powell?
I'm not as bothered by this one at all. You have the PAD lots, 750 single-family homes, and I just, I think you can get too much of one thing sometimes. I think in R1, it's a better neighborhood to live in than in R2. But the R2, as I say, if you have both going there in that same property, I'm not going to object to that. I think that's, that's fine to do. I know you know that we're pretty familiar with the land south of Early Road, and so I'm glad to see that the Carlton family was one of our dearest friends, and so I'm glad to see it's coming through. I think one of the things we really need to look at, though, is getting Henness Road finished, and I think that needs to be done ASAP.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Mayor, if I could, because I'm getting a little bit older and it's taking longer for Director Teich to jog my memory, we just want to clarify something from the prior one that also applies to this. On the HOA, the law he was referring to, and we primarily focus on the work trucks because most of our HOAs here were formed prior to 2015, but since 2015, like if these form an HOA now, they can't restrict the on-street parking, but the older HOAs can. So it takes me longer to remember things these days, so I wanted to clarify that.
Happens to us all. Thanks, Brett. All right, seeing no other comments, then I will call for an ordinance number, please. Gloria?
Ordinance number 1178.138.2, an ordinance of the council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, amending zoning ordinance 1178 and its subsequent amendments by changing the zoning from planned area development to multifamily residential R2 on property generally located at the northeast corner of Early Road and Henness Road, Casa Grande, Arizona.
I move for approval of ordinance number 1178.138.2 as presented.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second Gloria, can I please get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Lavender.
Yes.
Councilmember McBride.
Yes.
Councilmember Herman.
Yes.
Councilmember Powell.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Huddleston.
Yes.
Mayor McFarland.
Yes. All right, well, that's most of our business tonight. I think we just have reports that are left, so I will throw it over you, to you, Mr. Lavender, you may go first.
Thank you, sir. Just real brief tonight, on October 19th, the Arizona Cardinals hosted a youth football camp in town as part of Hispanic Heritage Month. Coach Mos Streety of the Cardinals came down, Anthony Edwards also was the Cardinal alumni came out, but it was a real neat event, and the Cardinals commented on it because we had both high school football coaches there, John Roberts from Vista and Jake Morrow from Casa Grande Union. They brought players from both of the teams to work with our middle school students, there were about 100 students involved in that from almost every school here in Casa Grande, all the public schools. And it was just a real neat community event, and so I think it's one of the reasons that we have a team that's got a legitimate shot at a state championship this year because we're building a community football program. So compliments to both coaches, a big thanking Anthony Edwards for doing it, and the Arizona Cardinals.
Very good. Mr. Powell?
Well, I just wanted to bring in something from the last meeting we had when my granddaughter came up and sat in this chair, and she asked me on the way home, does the mayor have a limo? She thinks you're a king or something, I don't know, but you did make a good impression on her. Yeah. So as I say, that's, I think we had a good meeting tonight, and I'm glad that everything went like it did, so.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. Bob?
You know, Mayor, the only thing I've got is the Pony Express coming through town.
This week?
Yeah, Friday, November, well, next week.
Oh, next week.
November 12th. I've got it 1:00, and I've got two locations behind City Hall and Dorothy Powell Center.
Right here.
Okay, so, anyway, if anybody wants to see the Pony Express, I think it's Gilbert Days.
Gilbert Days, yeah.
Yeah, is sponsoring it, so I will be here for that, that's about all I have.
Excellent. Matt?
I don't have a whole lot. You heard about the Youth Commission's event and a much better presentation than I could give. But also, I heard that, and I was asked to report from CG Main Street, Holly took the day off today because they had a big event this weekend, and said there was, at the Halloween stroll downtown, that was the Saturday event, they had 600 to 700 kids and about 1,000 people downtown for that event. And then the night before, of course, was the great event at Paul Mason by the Parks and Community Services Department, and that was very well-attended, I saw, because there was a ton of traffic over there.
Probably 2,000 people.
Yeah, probably 2,000 people there.
I was there, it was crazy. All right.
So, good job and great community stuff, and then there was a lot of trick-or-treaters last night as well. So the kids got three, three good days of solid candy.
Should have a ton of candy.
They have a lot of energy at school this week, don't you, Mr. Lavender?
I was, I too was amazed at how many people were out this weekend, and hats off to Community Services because it just seemed like people were really happy to be out. Just wanted to mention and thank Kaywood Farms, and Nancy was at the After Hours Chamber event last week, they did a great job, and she's just been such a champion for our community about the farming community and what they're going through, so we're really lucky to have her. Attended the Governor's Roadshow and the Budget with several of you that were here in town. And then also, just a congratulations to our new Representative Neil Carter on his selection for the, taking the place of the late Frank Pratt. And that's it, thank you.
And Teresa, too, for LD11, she lives in Vilago, so.
True.
LD11 is now represented by somebody from Casa Grande, which is good. All right, well, I too was at the Halloween festival that we had at the park, and Lisa was there as well, so I want to give her a little shout-out for attending, her and Dennis were there, so it's good to see them, good to see all the kids. There must have been 200 kids just in the, in three-and-under costume contest.
That was a lot.
It was unbelievable, so, but a great time. We also had the studio there, the dance studio, they did two separate routines that they were up on stage, really did a nice job, so congratulations to the studio and all the work that they put forth for that effort. I want to remind people that the Electric Light Parade is coming up, it's December 4th, it starts right at dusk, which is probably around 5:30 at that time of year. We'll do the Christmas tree lighting at the same time. Please sign up online, the deadline for sign-up is Friday, November 12th, so it's coming up. You can get all the applications online, please don't, don't wait, and please sign up because we want to see everybody back out there.
You're going to put us both down?
Want to see everybody back out there. And then also, Deck the House Light Tour is also going on this year, which is what we did last year because we canceled the Electric Light Parade, but the deadline for that, for sign-up, when is it, November? I thought I wrote it down here, I don't know what the deadline is, but it's December 1st, December 1st is the deadline for that, and it will run from December 11th through December 31st. And basically, we'll, if you sign up, if you sign up your house, you'll be on the map, they'll put your house on the map, and then people can go around and check out your light displays at your house. It's a really kind of cool event, take your family out and enjoy the city. We did the Budget last week, the Budget meeting was here in the City Hall. We also had our strategic planning meeting for the council that actually was open to the public, and we did that last week. Fernando Carnejo's funeral was this weekend, sad affair, but it was good to see the support the community put out, coming to the funeral and to the rosary. Jeff, were you there? On a positive note, I did a couple ribbon cuttings, one at La, I gotta say this right, Michicana, it's an ice cream place, it's where, over there next to the Firehouse Subs, it's right in the same little strip mall there, really good ice cream, they have ice cream, they have those frozen drinks or the ice drinks, and then they have the, like, popsicles, so it's actually from Mexico City, and it's really good, if you get a chance to get over there, go check it out. Tomorrow, we're doing a tour with the We Serve Group, it's a group of Realtors, and so I've got about 35 Realtors, and I'm going to give a tour around the city of Casa Grande, kind of show them what's happening with the city, hopefully promote our city a little bit and get them to, you know, bring more people in, buy more houses, and so that's exciting, and then we're going to have an event at our Community Rec Center at noon for lunch, and Mr. Richard Wilkie will be giving them a small presentation on all the good stuff that's happening here in the city. Also want to remind everybody that this Saturday is the Veterans Day Parade, and the Veterans Day Parade starts, I think it's at 10:00 AM, and it will start on Brown, and then. We have a fire truck? And we have a fire truck that the council is invited to be in, so be there about 9:30, and then we'll, I think I'm driving this year, so.
Can't make it.
Never mind.
And then after the Veterans Day Parade, I know Crossroads Church is having a big car show, so if you're bored this Saturday, then you're not paying attention because there's lots going on, so. That's all I've got tonight, just want to say thanks to everybody who came out tonight to the city council meeting, and thanks to my fellow council members for all your participation.
Could I add one more thing?
Everything you do.
You always have to have the last word, don't you?
I know, I do. Go ahead, Mr. Powell.
It's a bad habit, isn't it? I just wanted to say that Fernando's, the service that took place in the Catholic Church here was really good, Lisa was there, and he, they had, they had players playing the between, it was very different, the Mexican music, and that, when they would change and do different things, and it was a houseful, it was filled up very definitely, and had a lot of people that really thought a lot of him, and there was people from all aspects of our community and the area that.
Even Eloy.
That were there, yeah, yep.
Okay. All right, thank you, everyone. Tonight's meeting is adjourned.